It's five thirty-one, uh, August seventeenth, shockingly, too fast, too quick. But welcome to everybody here tonight for our first, I'll call it, school year, um, school board meeting in Mount Vernon School. Um, we'll open up with the public comment procedure. We will take public comment tonight from our virtual audience if we have any. If you want to speak during the public comment sessions, there'll be two. We will allow in-person guests to speak for three minutes first, if we have any. Once we go through all the in-person guests, we will open it up to virtual speak speakers on Zoom. Uh, we'd like you to raise your virtual hand, put your name in the avatar profile, and when speaking, turn on your camera on. Say your full name, hometown, residence, and address, and you will also have three minutes to speak. So we will start with, um, our consent agenda, and I'll just read them off in order, the March twenty-three Treasurers Report. And any of you can stop me if you wanna, um, have a comment, April twenty-three Treasurers Report, May twenty-three Treasurers Report. And then the June twenty-three Treasurers Report. I'll stop there. Is any comments or questions from the fellow board members? Okay. Number five of the consent agenda is the Mountain Vernon School District May Facilities Update. The June Facilities Update and the July Facilities Update. And again, I'll ask you, it looks like you're, uh, you didn't charge your computer on vacation.
I did not.
Does anybody have any comments or questions on the facilities update?
Just wanna say that the school looks fantastic, done a great job.
Thank you to our crew.
Yeah.
Mr. Pringle's, uh, been hard at it from day one, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Looks very good.
Yeah, I stopped by and met with Tom, I don't know how, I guess, when was that?
Oh, boy.
But the building does, as I commented to Tom, was fantastic, um. We're on schedule for a good opening without the projects. I think all the rooms you said are are done, ready to rock and roll.
Floors and classrooms, um, working on the MPR right now.
Yeah, so the waxing project and look shiny than it did the other day, so that's.
Does.
That's good. So, refresh my memory, I had it and down on notes that I forgot at home, but Mr. Pringle's first name and and just introduce him to us and the and our listeners if we have any.
Yeah, so, uh, Idris, uh, joined us in the spring and, um, he came from Amherst Middle School, actually, he's been working there for a while. Uh, he was ready for the next step and, um, being our lead custodian was a very fitting next step for him. Uh, in the process, he works closely with, uh, Rick Braun and and Roger, uh. He, I I can't even, it's hard to capture this in a minute, but, uh, the care, um, the work ethic, um, just the level of, um, just detail, uh, in his work. Uh, has been more than impressive. He's also excellent with with the teachers, with the staff, with the community. Um, really gets Mount Vernon already, you know, in a few months. Uh, it's been a great summer. He's, uh, very comfortable around students and just the the whole thing. So, um, he knew, you know, last summer, I don't think it's any secret, last summer, things were challenging. We worked right up until that last week. Uh, it was a challenge. Uh, there was a lot of work happening in the in the school last year too with the ventilation work, uh, but this year he knew what he had to get out in front of early in the summer, did that, and now he's chipping away at some of the other projects, uh, but the floors, the the classrooms. Really, um, and you know, it's been commented to me by many people over the summer. Um, I just think that's such an important, um, it's it's a it's a great optic, right? Um, when you walk into a school that's clean, that, uh, you feel like there's pride, I think that's probably the biggest thing in his work is the pride. Uh, it says a lot about the whole school, you know, it's not just him, it's not just his crew, it's all of us, we all take pride in our work. So I I really appreciate the work he's done, this stuff and so.
You know, one thing I meant, I'll mention is that we took a peek at it is that they were able to finally get the pottery kiln hooked up.
The kiln has been installed, it was great, uh, actually feel free to take a, take a walk down. Chrissy came in after they'd installed it from a mural behind it, and it it, uh, it fits right in, really, uh, she's excited to get going, do some pottery this year, so. Uh, at long last, it was in the closet, and it was kind of in limbo, and now it's it's good, so, we're in good shape.
And my my last comment would be that, if possible, maybe we already do that, if you could invite Mr. Pringle to be here for your open house, kind of as a meet and greet, so people could meet him as well, maybe, and his brand new team.
I actually got the chance to meet him over Wizarding Week, lovely, we're super helpful. He's a community member in Amherst, so very dedicated to the the community, the area, his children go to school in Amherst, so it's nice to have him.
Yeah. Win, win, win.
Yeah.
Yeah, all around.
And then the last consent agenda is the draft minutes for our June thirteenth meeting, any?
I just have one, and I don't know that it really matters, but in the minute it said multiple times that Andrew was elected rather than appointed, I know it's just semantics, but might be an important one. That would be the only change.
Make a note of that, that I haven't edited as needed.
Sorry today, I know you have a lot to do already, but I didn't replace, it's your friend, right?
So I'll take a motion to accept the consent agendas as presented, uh, with the edits as proposed by Sinclair on the minutes.
I'll make that motion in a second.
All those in favor? And that passes by a vote of four to nothing. Next up on our agenda tonight is our board goals. Does anybody have any input comment or progress on board goals? And I'll be honest that I have not leaned into them yet, so.
Yeah, so we're kinda, you know, my understanding that in the previous conversations, the board kinda asked the SAU to, and then Tom to kinda come up with some thoughts and ideas around what potential goal could be. What we're hoping for this evening is, if you have some ideas and thoughts, if you did get a chance to take a look at them, if they align to I don't know what you're thinking, or if we can amend or 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 tweak these and 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 bring them back out at a later date. Uh, I do feel good about where you're at, like giving it August and and having eyes on on some goals for twenty-three and twenty-four that are consistent with some of the goals that you've had in twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, so if you have some general thoughts and ideas, we'll we'll kind of listen and try to talk through some with you a little bit.
I mean, I did look over them, and I think that these do encapsulate a lot of the discussion that we had about board goals previously, so I I think it's I think they're great. They're all acting actionable, we can measure their progress, so.
I agree, I mean, and I like that there's the what and the how, but I'd love to see the who on there. Like who is responsible for these things, because, you know, submit a monthly board update to the Mount Vernon flyer. I just want clarity on who's doing that, because if you've got a goal, we need to know how that's gonna be implemented, so that's the one comment that I have is if we can add who. So that everybody's really clear on where the responsibility falls.
Yeah.
For each of those tasks.
My one thing was what form the updates would take in terms of the updates on math and literacy, is that verbal, is that something we're gonna get in a packet, like? Like if we're not at the meeting.
I I foresee each principal and Tom included updating the board and the principal's report and a section within that, you know, performance and in data.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. If I may, uh, last year, um, the format that I was using was literally taking off our school goals, the, uh, the goals that we had, the action steps, the outcomes. And then I was giving a monthly update to each each of the goals, so one of our goals is math, one of our goals is literacy. I can break down each action step and where we are in the continuum across the year as as we go.
Um, one other comment that I had on the communication goal with consider holding semi-annual listening sessions, um, I think if that is to be a goal, we just need to put out a schedule, like stack, because the listening session that we had had two people present, and there was a lot of effort put into that, but I think people, A, don't know they happen, um, and B, might want to attend, um, but it was our standard, you know, attendees who attended and gave great feedback. Um, and and Dodd and Eileen were there, and they're phenomenal, um, and great voices in the community, but I think to facilitate that in a broader way, it might be good to put out a schedule on when those things are happening.
While we're here, a big piece for this is the building committee and the facility in that work. We're, uh, we're just about ready to go. Tom's gonna give me a teacher and a special ed teacher, so we're almost there. When we talked about this, it was, uh, Mr. Sowenger was the connection between that middle school group. So I don't know how we're, um, we really want two board members, three board members, right, it's a forum. Uh, so two with a a a reserve. Uh, and is the board, I just in direction as we start forming this and work with with Chelsea to get the meetings going. Is this a, is this the envision, a five o'clock meeting, four o'clock meeting, does the board have a sense, is this, how would you like to do this? I I really think to get going, we're probably talking twice a month, every, you know, every two weeks. I I did, under Mike's direction, take a look at the, um, the tuition agreement. And the first big date, like the important date is October two thousand twenty-five. But the con, the agreement goes to two thousand twenty-six, but it's an October one maybe notice, but it's on October notice, a year ahead of time, you with me? So that's, that's the two-year, it's two, it's twenty-six months before the first notice, I mean, obviously there's extensions and things, but that's kind of guiding some of this work, um, and so just in quick direction, um, i- i- and we, I was hoping, I didn't realize, Mr. Stover, just, is he gonna join this work, is there gonna be one plus, is it? Uh, we do have a committee man, a committee member who's interested is just waiting to see, you know, if it's twice a month, it may be too much, but, you know, they're just trying to see the gravity. We have a, uh, a council, uh, and, right, I was gonna do some council work for us. Um, but we're ready to, we're, we'll be ready to go, you know, right as school starts to have our first hopefully two meetings in September. Um, any thoughts on when you, when you think the best time to have the building committee meet?
So I had a quick question for you, still, if there is no formal notification by October of the prior year, is that basically signify that we're going back in one-year increments? Or is that?
So it's a five-year bump, they're they're compared, but that has to be reauthorized by the voting body, so, okay. But you can redo this. Both both parties have the opportunity, like if you wanted to go one year by one year, obviously it's a legislative body every year. But the, we are fully, Mount Vernon is fully committed with the first notice as part of the current agreement, October of two thousand twenty-five.
So if we don't give a formal notification automatically, the five-year, no, so either, so if we don't, they're gonna assume we're not.
I believe when we negotiated it and when we wrote it, and I can go back to the language for sure, but we built it in so that both parties had flexibility at that time. It's my recollection.
It's our job to make sure that, in this SAU office, that we do notice and have it on the agenda to that. Um, it wouldn't be a, like a pocket thing, you know, it is something to live your action. That's our job, our job is to make sure that we implement the tuition regulations support both boards. So I really need, is is Mr. Sowenger gonna be one of the board members, because he was a connection to the middle school study, is it just gonna be two of you, and is this a four-thirty?
I think he wanted to, he, I felt he was pretty passionate about it, um.
I would, I will say yes, that he would be one of.
Perfect, that helps us.
Three.
Really wanted two with a reserve.
Right, and I'm I'm willing to take the other slide.
Would like to be the reserve, either of them can make it.
I I mean, I could be a reserve, this, I would probably have to be remote. Um, you can make that, so, yeah, that would probably be pretty difficult, but I can be.
And I I think as far as the day and time, I think we maybe survey the people that are gonna be on it for best day, and then maybe the first meeting, we have a time, but then we all talk about, we talk amongst ourselves, we decide what you know, this four o'clock work, this seven o'clock work, or whatever, so, I mean, obviously we want everybody to shut off, so.
So I'm trying to, for a five, five o'clock, see if that works, and we'll, the person on the agenda will be what works best, maybe, in remote. And we've got, we've got board people, community members, thank you, this helps in most of the by round.
And you have a list of potential professional consultants that
Yes.
will help us
We do, yeah.
through the process.
Yes.
One, I remember that you preferred.
Yeah, and we'll absolutely talk about as a committee, though, um, I've done work before this district and during this district with Banwell, they're involved with, so there's some positive, Roger, Roger will be the Rogers in in Amyer. Then you got, you work much more hand in hand with Banwell and others than I have, so, yeah, we've done the Brett Singer, done H L Turner, I've done Banwell. We've got enough experience that we can speak to the positives, I think.
Yeah.
Now, this is tremendous help, thank you, um, we've got the foundation for the first meeting, first couple of weeks of school.
Congrats. And and going back, Sarah, your comments, it actually came up at the meet and greet last night from Bonnie, and she questioned about, um, how do we get more participation from people, because it's the same, it's the same people over and over again. Um, and that was evident last night, it was the same people that showed up to meet and greet, uh, pretty much, not exclusively, but it was familiar faces, let's put it that way, so, which is great, but how we crack the code.
I don't know that we do crack the code, I mean, I think it needs to get pushed to the community.
Yeah.
I think the community has to crack the code. Yeah, I feel like I've been trying to crack the code for nine years and haven't cracked the code, so, and not that I'm the best at cracking codes, but, I mean, it's not for lack of trying, and I think, no, and I'm not saying not looking for any validation there, but what I'm saying is, I think that if the community wants to engage, the community has to step up and engage. It can't be up to the people behind the table to constantly be reaching out, there's, I mean, you have to have two people's hands come together to really connect, so. That's my thing on it.
Yeah.
But I think if the community wants to be part of this, they need to step up and be part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Um, anything else on the board goals, any more discussion on any of them?
And can I add just a little bit, so, I appreciate the the goals, because some of the things, I just wanna update this board on some of the work that's happened all through all of the summer in regards to, kind of like the direction that at the overall SAU is is hoping to go in. Um, as we talk about building level goals and and school board goals, what we're looking to try to create is some through lines from from the SAU to the three districts, so the experience that students are having in a pre-K twelve system is you know, built around the same things, and so, uh, I put out some thoughts, and you'll see these a little bit later and when we meet again about kind of some things that we wanna prioritize and some places we don't wanna play our energies. Early in the summer, we asked the building principals, the cognizant of the work that's been taking place in their buildings in previous years, and trying to align some of their priorities and goals to that, keeping in mind in places like MV and South Egan, you know, some of the board goals that already exist in the direction that the boards wanna head head in. And so I think that work has been well received, and so hopefully, the intention is to at some point, whether it's in September or October, you're gonna get some sort of graph with SAU priorities, MV priorities. You know, board priorities and school priorities, so you'll see what the work is happening, but we're looking at that to to really kind of be in place for for kind of the workaround for two years, like twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, and to try to keep that that work consistent through through the process, and, um, so you can have some overall areas of energy that you wanna work towards, and then support the different districts in an individual manner as they try to, you know, work towards those. And so, uh, we'll continuously kind of flesh those out, but the reason I bring that up is when I get the opportunity to review these, they're very easily aligned to what is good educational business and the the direction that we're thinking we wanna head in, so I just wanted to say we're kind of right where we need to be. I appreciate Tom's kind of work with that, so, thank you, just wanna add that in, so you have some context, yeah, a little bit.
Our next item on our agenda for tonight, um, is to discuss the MV, MVSB and MVEA MOU.
Alphabet soup.
A lot happened. Regarding late start to early release, so I'll refer to Mike and Steve.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, what you guys are gonna see over the next, you know, couple of board meetings and and throughout the year really is uh, a lot of the work that's happened, can't be denied that's been happening for a few years. Well, Christine working with the board, or Steve working with the board, and so, as I come into to this position, I I do want it to be a kind of collective effort. When we carry on, so, obviously Steve has been navigating through the late start to early release type of work, and and we have an MOU uh, that we're encouraging, you know, we'll get a motion for for Peter to kind of sign off on it. We brought it with us this this evening, I can let Steve to speak a little bit more to, you know, you know, what the the outcome of this MOU is for us.
Sure, uh, very quickly, last year, um, due to some, due to a a safety-related, um, professional development opportunity, we had house training, we moved to the afternoon. Uh, because it was thought it was really better for the teachers, and just, I remember some pretty emotional stuff. So we did a pilot, a little bit of a pilot, and a couple of releases, we surveyed the community and the teaching staff, and overwhelming that the community at least wanted to try a full implementation of moving from, instead of like an eight, starting school at ten, letting go about twelve-twenty, fifteen, twelve-thirty, something like that. Uh, and so, what's what's fascinating in this this wonderful world, there's three different distinct organizations, Amherst, South Egan, P C, and of course, MVEA. The Mount Vernon Agreement specifically states that we will have late starts. And so, and when we entered, this was very collaborative and collegial, I I didn't have a dog in the fight except to do what people wanted. And all the associations and the community and teachers agreed to try a full implementation, but because it specifically stated that we will have late starts, we need to do an MOU for this year, converting the late starts to early releases. Um, and that's tonight is codifying that, we worked, um, very closely with them, they reviewed this, signed it, those were signed copies. Um, so, to codify the calendar based on this collective bargaining agreement, if the board were making action items, authorizing Chair Eckhoff to sign the MOU for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, shifting from early releases, sorry, late starts to early releases, that would be one.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize our chair to sign the MOU, come on, second.
All those in favor? Do we have any discussion?
So just the one question, so this is the pilot just for this year.
It is just for this year, so theoretically, we could revert back depending on what comes out of the pilot. Yeah, and and so just in full transparency, the, we've had some parents, you know, it's a little bit funky, because it's a twelve-twenty, it's not really two hour at the end of the day, so, and we're working on some transportation, working with after-school programs in some of our places, so. Um, when we do it ten times, it might, there's some of the shine may wear off, we don't know. Um, but Mike will be working or leading the next calendar iteration, um, but yes, this MOU is just for one year. Uh, and like all calendars for one year anyway, so that's not, but, um, we'll see. Uh, there's certainly, this was made a decision based on the data we collected from parents, from teachers, and, um, community at large. So, we'll see what happens, but yeah, one year, most MOUs are, until we codify this as a contract, it'll be for one year.
Pretty, makes sense, pretty positive on all fronts.
Yeah, um, and and we think it's educationally best, because the youngsters start the day very true, so sometimes the youngsters coming in at ten o'clock. A little spirited, a little spirited at ten, ten fifteen.
So I'm just curious, would the, would we still feed lunch on an early release?
Yeah.
So they basically get lunch and then leave?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see what happens, we'll take more data, um, one of the things that Mike is is charge Christine and me. We tied, um, just to make, we're focusing under Mike's leadership to evaluate programmatic changes. Um, so we will do another evaluation of this change issue. Thank you, thank you.
Very happy to do it, over to Bonnie.
So, uh, one goes to MVEA and one goes to Chelsea.
I think if I move back, I want to do school, I'd rather get out more late than start late, I think I'd be in that much, it's a work.
Yeah, even on high school, though.
On high, yeah.
In high school, they like to sleep in.
Yeah, I think that was why, because it was South Egan who started years ago with the late starts for PD, then Mount Vernon started that, and then Amherst only about twelve years ago, twelve, thirteen years ago, tech done and started. So I think that's, that's why how it evolved, right?
Couple of quick funky things, one to say, law says we have to align this with our CTE programs, and Milford does it this way. The other piece is, we had this occasionally, the stars align, we have a late start, and then youngsters have an early release for that buddy. Maybe it's cool, like two hours now, Kelly, in the future, if we do this lock-in, she can put our long-distance trips on that date. So we gained back a little bit, always looking under, you know, Mike's really, this carving out and finding instructional time, so, in theory, we're going up to Lebanon, Lebanon, playing game, we do it on a early release, you with me?
Yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to, well, sometimes a late start, and it's just, it's like the Cheers episode when Norm bought the Christmas catalog and the, um, phone book with Stars, have you ever seen that?
Did you get that in the minutes today?
No, I did, I was like ten.
Oh, my god.
Shock. No, I.
That was, I want that. She said it's deep, and I was ten. Who's at Friends now?
Friends analogies would be better, yeah.
The cheers, I'm the wrong generation.
See, Mike is like, you're right, it's like, well, ten.
So I can, I can talk that a little bit, I got an email request from one of our HR people today, and she said, in reviewing our files, there's some documents that are missing from your file when you were hired.
Starting this point.
I said, she goes, are you in? I need a copy of your drop is license, and I said, no, I'm working from home today, but I'll be in tomorrow, I'll take care of it. I said, thirty-six years, and now you're just. And she comes back with, yes, and ironically, it's two months before I was even born.
Ouch.
Yeah, it'll go, so. So, our next, uh, item on our agenda for tonight is the board to review the full year twenty-five budget calendar.
Yeah.
And assign members to subcommittees.
Yeah.
I love that. Yes, thank you, so, um, I did share the full master schedule with all of you, so you should get, should have gotten an email of that. That just gives you the SAU budget detail, so he can, Amherst, and Mount Vernon, um, so you can see it's a giant puzzle fitting it all together, so there's no overlap, um, so, and also in your packet, you do have the Mount Vernon, um, detail. So, we're all set, invites are out for those who have been assigned, so I'm just looking for the board, um, to, uh, be assigned to the different subcommittees. So if we can do that as soon as possible, that would be great, and I will get those invitations out. Um, I have had a conversation with the Mount Vernon moderator, who, um, didn't have any members yet, but was working on that, so I'm really hopeful we're gonna have a budget committee this year, so, um, so fingers crossed, and as soon as, um, I hear back from her, we'll, um, their meetings are already set up as well, so, they can be, uh, they have their first organizational meeting, and they can be assigned to the subcommittees as well, so.
Being slow here, and where are the subcommittees listed?
So, so they're in a card, I can make a new, um, yeah, they're in here.
Yep, so, in the board notes, it's, um, student services, food service slash transportation. Um, oh, I think it says two, that's not right, hold on.
Student service, you were special.
Yeah, that's not, so. That's the same thing. And I have it open in Trello, I'm happy to.
Which, board subcommittee assigns, budget board committee assigns?
Um, there's budgets, so.
Oh, budget, there we go.
Um, it's a budget, no, subcommittee, no, maybe I'm in the wrong spot, I can just, must imagine. So there's administration, curriculum, facilities.
I'm seeing a card that's got people already assigned.
Yeah, it was from last year.
That's last year's.
Yeah. I can make a copy of it so that we can. I can make a copy of it so that we can just add this year's.
So do you want to just go down through Amy and?
Yeah.
Volunteers from the, unless we're gonna keep him by Andrews, should be available too, so it's not not just the four of us, so or do we?
So I, by date, the only ones that I could do are on the twenty-fifth, so I could do the curriculum administration or warrant article, I don't know if that changes anything for anybody.
So also, just to um to note that. Um, this subcommittee meeting first set up as Zoom and in person, so you don't get a forum. And they set up at lunchtime, so hopefully that works for folks, it's either eleven to twelve or twelve to one, so yeah. I hope that would work for.
Lunchtime is then close.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. So, so yeah, so it's um student services, food service slash transportation, facilities. Technology, curriculum, administration, and warrant article. Um, we, um, also have an SAU budget committee to make arrangements. That I believe you guys chose a member, okay. Yeah, God, okay.
Yeah, so if you go in the master budget, you want a calendar and go into Mount Vernon detail, you can see them there.
And where would I find that?
So FY twenty-five, have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Mount Vernon detail, these are on there, yeah, right there, those are the, yeah, so it has the needs and times.
So I'm just throwing this out, we want to wait till our next meeting in September to. Get Andrew involved, or do we want, you guys want to volunteer for the ones you know you can do and are interested in? And then we backfill at our next meeting, what do you think is the best course of action?
I mean, I'm happy to put my name down for that for the twenty-fifth, because if I don't block it, I may lose it in my schedule. So I can either block it myself and then wait and see, but that's the only date out of the other two days I'm already blocked.
So you would do the curriculum?
I could do curriculum administration and warrant vertical at any of, any one, two, or three of those at your pleasure.
And I can think, uh, you get, I'm always. I'll take the facilities and technology.
I could do the twenty-third.
Look, that's not good all off in one shot.
We do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, person go if you want, that's not a problem.
So what did you take, George? I'm sorry.
I will take the twenty-fourth, which consists of facilities and technology. If I'm reading this correctly.
Yeah.
Okay, so you took the twenty-third.
Student services and food service slash transportation. Yeah, and then Andrew could just go to, really, he could choose.
I'm not, so I guess I'm I'll backfill if somebody can't make it or jump in as well.
Yeah, and I believe you're the representative for the full committee. Right? Yeah.
Facilities too, so we'll keep it, there's another building committee.
Yeah, you're the representative for the full committee meeting, so that actually worked that well. Um, and then you can have Andrew, he really could go to any of them.
Yeah, and it's all fluid if something pops up for people's calendar that we can, you know, adjust to.
Yeah, and that's great, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm good on that, yeah.
Yeah, and then you'll send the links out.
I will, yeah, I'll probably do it tonight.
No, no rush.
So now that you agree that you're not getting that.
Oh, is that what it is?
Right.
And I don't know whether this is a Mike or Tom or both, but my my ask also was September, October, if Roger could. Join us for uh building update here, I mean, we all agree that we're in, appear to be in good shape, but. We're like kind of a deeper dive maybe from him, so as we are planning and budgeting and. We kind of have a good, good read on where we are with the building and and. And those issues that he may have, but it'd be nice to have, you know, live. We all good with that?
Yeah.
October and November?
Yeah, whatever, I mean, whatever works to his schedule, I just don't want to wait until March of next year and then, you know, when we're. Planning and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we need a new.
Yeah, he's finishing up that older project, the water system.
Yep.
Design, so he can give you an update on that, there's a little bit left to do, but he can give you an update on that as well.
You know, throw it at him and, you know, like I said, it'd have to be next month, month, and October, November will be fine, but. Just like to get an update, I mean, and applaud him, he does, and he's going to do it right now. The next item on the agenda for tonight is. Uh, Amy Facy to provide an update on the unassigned fund balance.
Yes, so we, yeah, so we have um just about completed our financial reporting. Um, out to the Department of Education and Department of Revenue, where we provide our end of year um finances. So we, we will not have funds for the projects, which you all were expecting me to say that. So we had those end of year projects that if we had funds um available, then we would, but we we do not. Um, we have just about, not not quite, but close to what we had predicted for unassigned fund balance. For offsetting tax relief, um, we do have the funds for the warrant articles. Um, we, the good news is we will be the the tax estimated tax. Impact that was estimated at deliberative, we um, we will be providing, what was it? Um.
Meet that estimation.
We will, we will exceed that estimation, actually, because um a few things. Uh, we'll have some increased revenue in um interest income, because interest rates have gone up, so we've got some more revenue in. So we'll be um projecting additional revenue in FY twenty-four as well, probably not as robust as twenty-three, but some. Um, and also the uh there's a significant, relatively significant increase in adequacy. That is being provided, so the the adequacy amount that I think it was thirty-five hundred or so is up to forty-one hundred. So we'll be getting back.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, yeah, so we'll be getting back additional adequacy, adequacy funds. That will be used to directly offset the tax effort. So, so that's good news for the taxpayer. Um, so when, when we finish all of our financial reporting. Um, I think it would be a good idea for me to have some hard numbers for you to to be able to present to the public, to show. Hey, folks, we said that your tax impact was going to be this, it's actually lower than that, and and here's why. Um, so these are funds that are, that are coming back in in the form of revenue that is going directly to reduce the tax effort in FY twenty-four. So it's good news.
Oh, yes, we need that, because it's part of our collective, so you gotta, we gotta push back.
Yeah, so I think that'll, it'll help, it'll, it'll be similar FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five, so not a huge difference when we're looking at the FY twenty-five budget. But for this year, it's a nice break.
So two things that I had, um, can you explain what exactly are the adequacy funds? What is that?
So it's funds per, hold on, let's see, notes that Steve gave him today. So. So it's a cost per pupil that is provided back to um. To the taxpayers, so it's increased from thirty-eight hundred to forty-one hundred. Um, there's also an amount for each pupil eligible for free reduced lunch. And that rose from nineteen hundred to twenty-three hundred. And then the allocation for pupils receiving special ed uh increased from two thousand eighty to twenty-three hundred. And those are in English from seven fifty-six to eight hundred.
So the state funding, uh New Hampshire state funding is called adequate, it comes from two things, it comes from water. And swept the statewide education property tax that actually is paid here and stays here. So this year, the the state just finished their budget and they and they decided to raise the number of funds per child. So about thirty-eight hundred to forty-one hundred. That's nice, and usually you only get it the following year, but they're actually making it so it's going to go into the tax rate now. So it's almost immediate tax relief, and Amy and I spent a lot of time with Mike talking about, do you want to spend this? You can have a public hearing and spend it, very few districts will do it because. And and a special meeting and and it really the intent of this is for tax, especially as we're talking about the deliberative, we were pretty clear about it. And the community, though they didn't pass the budget, they did pass all the articles, so the articles are going to make a difference. So um so they increased adequacy. Uh, and but they took out third grade reading, there used to be extra money for every student that was on a grade level in third grade reading. They got rid of that, so they went to base aid, so the cost per student is called base aid, up to forty-one hundred. All the little splinter stuff is called differentiated aid. So if the more free reduced lunch, the more aid you get, the more students learning English has, uh, your English language learn, the more money you get, more specialized kids, more money you get. That's the differentiated aid. Um, there's also lawsuits going on right now saying that there's no one in a straight face that can tell you that adequate education is funded by forty-one hundred dollars per child. That is wacky rule. Um, and so there's a multiple lawsuits going on, once again, with the state saying forty-one hundred dollars is not an adequate education, let's pay your fair share. Um, but that's the adequacy went up, and I think that's one of the reasons why it went up, they're gonna say, oh, look, we made that big change, two hundred bucks a kid, Tom, how many kids? Three hundred, how many kids?
Two twenty-five?
Two twenty-nine, so two hundred and thirty kids, ten thousand bucks a kid. Um, it's gonna help.
Yeah, so you you actually have the choice to do nothing and accept this money and it goes directly to. Uh, reduce the tax effort, or you could have a special meeting, which is a whole public hearing deliberative vote. So it's the the whole um process to ask the town if, um, for the ability to spend that money. No one is really doing that.
That's your very, very.
Yeah, it's, I mean, you have that choice, but we would assume that you, the board would not want to do that.
So do you need a vote to accept those funds or just?
No. Yeah, yeah, if we do nothing, the default is that it goes to reduce the tax effort. But I do think it's important for us to, and you know, we've talked about this, that to let the public know that. That is the decision that was made and that your taxes will be reduced because of this, more than what we predicted they would be. What the tax impact would be at deliberative.
So can can we take a vote to just put that in our minutes and have that?
Okay.
I mean, I think it is a decision that's being made. I vote on it.
Take a motion. I'll make a motion, put it in minutes. I'll, I'll.
Set them to set up, offset the tax rate, yeah.
Yeah. So.
So the tax rate is going to be lower than you said at the deliberative?
Yeah.
March, February, February, at least the March meetings.
I know.
So my follow up to that is, where are, where and what are the projects that we're not going to be able to do? We kind of, we're not, where is that?
It was about forty-three thousand.
And are those being rolled into a maintenance schedule?
Yeah, they were um. Some facilities projects, replacing a compressor, some painting signs, some access control. Office window, bathroom floor replacement. Furniture replacement, and some technology, projector. Uh, TV.
Information screen.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say painting was a project?
It was classroom signs and painting, it was, uh. I believe it stemmed from the uh security review that wanted to make sure that the signs in the hallways.
Oh, it was more one off as opposed to a maintenance review.
Yeah, yeah, so. Yes, this is something that, you know, if there are are projects that are not able to be done, which they won't be done uh this year. These are on um on Roger's radar to look at, um either putting the budget or looking at building them into the um facilities plan. Or looking at potential grant funds, so. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, our next item for tonight is the update on nutrition services at.
Yeah, um, so. Crystal dug in and took a look at um current food prices and um. Has decided and were recommended to us that we maintain the current price for breakfast and lunch. Um, we raised them last year, we're raising them two years in a row, it's a little, a little tough. So she's, um, she is recommending that, and she has been meeting with the uh. Um, the food service manager to try to come up with other ways for um for revenue building, so. I think she had some conversations with you, Tom, about some ideas.
Yeah, she, yeah, um, some, some ideas around when classrooms have like celebrations that.
Yeah.
There would be an opportunity for the teachers, the classrooms to tap into food service to sort of. You know, coordinate that.
Yeah.
With them, so.
We're looking at some potential revenue sources to to try to mitigate the the loss that um. That we we have sometimes, we had this past year, which required the grants for coming down a fund, so. Which in turn takes money away from your unassigned balance. So, you know, tied together.
Is he looking at like Chick-fil-A coming too?
Yeah, she, there's a few things, she was looking at that, there was like a Domino's slice, I think she was doing at the high school. So, yeah.
Super creative.
She's very creative, she's trying to find ways, I know that the, you know, the quality, I think, has really improved, the presentation. Um, so we'll continue to work on that. Uh, I think we should be good as far as staffing this year, so that was, we had some challenges with that last year, so. That, I believe, will be resolved in October, so moving forward. Um, that potential loss in funds will not exist.
So remind me, because I think I asked this a lot, have we noticed any upticks in applications for free or reduced lunches?
Um, I have to ask Crystal, she's known as an uptick, but I know that she regularly reaches out to families, especially if they're negative balances. Um, she'll, in a student's account, she'll reach out to the family to see if they would like to apply for free and reduced lunch. So that's part of her regular practice.
And I'm asking because certainly if we're gonna hold the line and pricing, that's, and we're seeing an uptick, I think that's.
Yeah.
Probably a good course to take.
Yeah, yeah.
Hold the line and so you get a better picture as to where we're trending.
There's a lot of confidentiality issues.
No, I understand.
Person actually who's able to 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 do that work, but she is is diligent and and reaching out, so.
So do you not happen to know what is, what are we charging for a lunch? I think it's three dollars, it's three, that sounds familiar.
The note says three, I just need to double check it here.
I think that's right.
We made once, breakfast is a dollar seventy-five.
Yeah.
Lunch is.
On our website, it's, yeah, three dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, seventy-five.
I know that the percent of students on free and reduced price lunch in Mount Vernon has not changed significantly over the past few years. And again, like, you know, there could be changes each year.
Yeah.
But there's not been a a significant change in that number. Just I know from our title one funding and checking that percent.
Okay.
That's true.
And do we get any, I should know this, but I know, do we get any funding from the state to support through the program? And if so, has that increased at all?
Um. So there is some state funding, um and then for federal, it's the the reimbursement and then food sales. So those are really the the sources. We did receive those um supply chain grants last year. So uh those might continue. We don't know, but those are very helpful. They're they they were targeted to um leave as perishable items, but that they were helpful. So.
I guess my point is even though inflation has subsided a little bit.
Yeah.
It's still at three.
Yeah.
And if the state hasn't increased their their funding, then we're not, we and everybody else fall behind a little.
Yeah.
Coming back to the.
Yeah, it hasn't, I haven't, I actually it increased very slightly um in terms of this date. I was just working on the the revenue projections for this year. It's not a lot.
Um, based on the adequacy information, the previous lunch rate is six point eight percent.
That is a tiny uptick for.
Now, that's not just this building, though. That includes the students, the South Eagan students, all number of students.
It's five minutes.
Yeah, it's it's so it's not just here. A lot of other Mount Vernon kids educated in this municipality. Six point eight.
Interesting. Better will hire them, not them. Yeah. I wonder if that was just released from, yeah, that would be the most recent.
Yeah, I mean, it's on the, it's an adequacy calculation. So
Yeah.
You get those tw- the number of kids who get the differentiated aid. That's what I use.
And all of our kitchen equipment is good. Then we had some issues. We did have some issues um and there was some sort of.
Did we get something last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, but we just had a recent issue with freezer. Um, so we lost some food, but not a lot. It's mostly commodities. So wasn't the end world, but.
So we're looking at a replacement potentially, the freezer?
Not right now. I see. She was actually getting um someone to come in and repair. She has some good folks that that keep us running.
Yeah.
But um she is putting together uh five year plans for all the districts in terms of equipment. So uh as part of the budgeting process.
Yeah.
So that's going to be really helpful to be able to to plan out going forward. So so we'll speak to that during uh during budgeting.
Cause I'm assuming that stuff is not part of the capital budget.
Yeah, like, yeah, no.
So it's all coming out of operating.
It it comes out of the food service.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Tom is sharing, but she also deposited on Slack in our Mount Vernon channel. She's been here this summer. I'm speaking of Crystal right now, making the space. She painted it. It's very welcoming. She was a fresh fruit, um you're all. Um, the refrigerator looks like you want to hug it because of how eyes and um arms.
Yeah.
And she she did that.
This is the uh the fridge.
Well, that's huge. Sorry, Mom.
Oh, no, no, you're you're good. Thank you. I'm giving Crystal. This is a little bit. She's really something.
Yeah, she works incredibly hard and I think has done a lot of work, particularly in this school to to make this a very uh very positive experience for for students.
And so who's the is the the lead in there? Her has been the lead this year and done a done a great job with Christian.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Moving in the right direction.
So help me out. I'm not an accountant. Why wouldn't the kitchen equipment be part of the building capital? I mean, it's all.
Yeah, everything's part of the food service fund. Which is already. It's it's really, it's the own enterprise. So everything is, I mean, even you know, her her salary um is a portion to it and all of the equipment is a portion to that fund, separate from the general fund.
Right. So how is that determined? As as. Yeah. Which was its own separate, because it it raises money. It has its own revenue stream.
Yeah. So we track revenue. That's why I give you folks revenue and expenditures quarterly. So I can see where we're going.
But any shortfalls do actually.
The shortfalls do come from, if there's no fund balance left from prior years, then it comes from the general fund.
Anything like a broken stove or freezer or something.
Yeah.
So it it does affect us, but it's just not built yet.
Right, which is why having a five year uh replacement plan is really important so that we can build into the budget.
Okay, but if she runs as a surplus, you can buy it right out of that. Doesn't have a taxpayer's.
Right.
So if you have Chick-fil-Aos, Bonkers, boom, get yourself a fridge.
Yeah.
Well, how often does she run a surplus, so?
Not not so much in Mount Vernon.
Here it's tough. It's such a small.
Is actually had had a surplus the last two years.
Right.
So, yeah.
It was a lot of tater tots.
Yeah.
I like that.
This is small, so it's hard.
Sometimes they're crispy.
Yeah. So increasing revenue is a big goal. I mean, we want to offset. We we want to break even, but we can make money then.
Yeah, but you know, the other thing is raising the revenue in the property isn't always feasible and you need to replace or fridge. From that point that outside of this, need to figure out a way to make sure so, because either way, we're gonna need it regardless of whether she's gonna have the funds or not.
So you could put it in, you could fund something out of the capital reserve. You could do that.
Once, if she could pull together what the capital plan is, then we can.
Right. You could, like, your fifty thousand dollars for your building, you could increase that and put money into the capital reserve to fund equipment. There's nothing against, you know, having, uh expanding your capital needs program to include.
Can we just assign fund balance if there is?
Yeah.
Be used?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do that too.
At least if you plant, it'll take the peaks and valleys out of that budget.
Yeah.
You know, you're running kind of barely breakeven and all of a sudden, year three, you you bottom out because you lose the freezer, you lose an oven, and rather just have that run rate going through a piece of it every year, building to I don't have to explain to you.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. So I can, you know, certainly having her five year plan was going to be part of the budget process, but we can look at you know, what it looks like. And if we if we think um increasing the request from an assigned fund balance to the building project fund, you know, your fifty thousand, increasing that, we could do that. So we can come back during budget time and and give you some options.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know where we are with age and.
Yeah.
You're getting out.
Yeah.
To Georgia's phone.
Yeah.
You're good.
Absolutely.
One up blind side.
Yep, we can do that. It's good.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
We use the kiln as a pizza oven, maybe. I already cracked a joke about that. Yeah.
Sad jokes.
Uh huh. Yeah, no shortage.
So we are at our next public input stoppage. So do we have anybody online that's hand up knocking? Anybody? You were, okay? Any need for non-public tonight, what? We didn't do principals report. I missed her.
So I
I apologize.
I can't even look this, it seems like every time we're near the end of the meeting, I just have to say, ah. So I did have a couple notes. If if we have a minute, I can give you a quick uh kind of highlights of the summer, or I can park that till next month. I don't, I didn't submit an official report this month. But I did, I did come prepared with a couple notes. So it's summer. So we have a minute. Don't you?
Yeah.
So um first, I just want to say honor to uh work with Mike uh over the summer. Uh talk about you know, the plan for the next few years, the work that's happening in the SAU, the work that's happening in Mount Vernon. Um, as Mike stated, um, I feel like the efforts that has been the board, the 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 school staff um over the last couple of years in my tenure, uh in addition to the vision moving forward, uh is very much aligned. And I feel really good about the work that we have planned for this year, the work we've done over the last two years, the work moving forward. So um so I want to thank Mike for his work over the summer. Our meet and greet last night, not a huge crowd, but a really important crowd last night. I thought that uh, you know, having got to know many of these folks now over the last few years, um I think it was a really good representation of our community in Mount Vernon. Um, we had folks that had lived here for a long, long time, who have served on committees, served on and worked uh in leadership for the community. Uh, we have young parents there, you know, and then we have everything in between. We had a parent there who actually went all the way through the schools, uh Mount Vernon, all the way up through South Eagan, has a really good perspective on things. Um, and I thought it added had a lot to the conversation. So uh it was, it was a good night. Um I I thought there was some good energy, good questions. People were honest upfront and it was, it was a good uh I think a good way to kind of lead into the work that we're doing this year. Um, this summer, three really strong programs. We had our E S Y program. Those are students, uh mainly students with special needs that would potentially regress if not in E S Y. So uh we have, we have five students at E S Y. We have three staff dedicated to E S E S Y. Uh, we ran our Title One program again uh for math and reading. We had thirty nine students and a rock star team. Uh, I'm just gonna run down the names, just you know these names, but Amy LaVoy, Charlene, behind me, Jan Maddy, Kim Ty, Laura Oberst, Lauren Philibot, Maggie Home and Megan Galligan. Like I said, a rock star team uh working with students on math and reading. Uh, the engagement, the energy, unbelievable. You know, summertime, we take on kind of a different approach in the summer, uh but really high engagement, uh good attendance all summer, which can be, you know, sort of a touch and go in the summer, but uh really good, good uh attendance there. Um, and then for the second year, we ran our enrichment programming. So the E S Y Title One run in the morning and then enrichment in the afternoon. Uh, started the eleventh of July and ran for uh four weeks. And we ran seven different classes, Christine, correct me if I'm wrong, uh seven classes. We arranged from uh the smaller classes were six or seven students, uh the larger classes were upward of seventeen, eighteen students. Um, and it was everything from steam camp, um sculpting and electricity. Believe it or not, in the same class, uh crafted, nature inspires art and um uh Charlene again, Christie, our art teacher, uh Erin, one of our paras worked at, Laura Oberst, uh Maggie, Home and Susannah Hardgraves, who actually did a stint here.
Came back.
Uh, came back, came back, loves the hill.
Yeah.
Uh, so did a, did a great job. Um, so really good positive energy this summer. Great to see families, kids coming in. Um, and and I thought uh that there was uh energy well spent. Uh, enrollment, I just want to give an update. I mentioned we're up to two twenty nine. I should say two twenty nine is where we that's where we believe we're going to be. And that's with um, we have paperwork on 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 these new homes or whatever. Uh, there, some of these are not like official, official yet. We're still waiting on a utility bill or whatever, but um, it looks like we're gonna be at two twenty nine to open. And uh just to give you a perspective on that, at the end of last year, uh we were at two nineteen, I believe, at the end of, well, actually, I need to go back to it might have been at two sixteen, actually, the, as I said here, I think we're at two sixteen at the end of last year. I I can check that for the next month, but uh it looks like we'll open at two twenty nine. So I've seen a lot of, lot of registrations this summer. Um, and it's everything from, I just today was speaking to a mom, uh homeschool, uh kids are coming in. Uh, so they've been in the community for a while, to North Carolina, Texas, you know, families bought homes. And uh so really exciting. We're doing our meet and greet with new families. Uh, that's something I started last year. Um, it kind of piggybacks off of the kindergarten night, but it meet greet for the new families. So I'm excited to uh get them together. Welcome them uh on the thirtieth at Wednesday evening. We have the kindergarten meet and greet. So that's net. So some kids moved out, right? So uh that's net. So our, yeah, so and I'll have, I'll have to check if we're two sixteen. I know when I started here, we're two oh nine. I just remember that.
Wow, twenty kids in two years?
We've jumped twenty in two years.
And that's bestest.
Two twenty nine.
That is, I'm looking at it, have it up right now, two twenty nine.
Yeah, that's good. Thirteen new kids.
Predicting two eighty two by twenty thirty two, twenty.
Yeah.
Thirty, bring school here, two eighty two.
Yeah.
But that's.
Hence the building can be work.
Yeah, that's a few, few years off, but. So far.
Interesting conversations this summer with the new families coming in. Um, it's amazing nowadays. You know, Mount Vernon's on the map. When you do the, when you do the research around new homes, you look at schools, you look at data, you know, um that's what they do. They, you know, they're in North Carolina. They're not just throwing a dart at the wall. They're, they're doing their research and uh the secret's getting out. So um it's exciting. Um, it's, it's nice to see some new families coming in, some energy, maybe PTA members, uh we see, but uh uh but it's, it's been fun. Uh, and uh we did we had a, we had a family that's been in town for a long time. Dad was relocated. They had, they had to move. Sad to see them go, but um it's been, it's been a good, good summer. So uh hiring wise, uh you probably already remember Scott Sauce here. Uh, we hired him in the spring. Uh, Amanda P, P between Clark and and Mount Vernon. Uh, Amanda Anderson, our new nurse, uh she's been in almost every day, getting, getting ready, really excited about Amanda. Um, we've had a little turnover in our para area. We had a para retire. And then we had a para who needed to look at different work for her family, just opportunities for her family, flexibility and so forth. Um, we were very fortunate to hire uh Kristen Roy in the spring, and we have a candidate moving forward for the other vacancy uh who I think is gonna be a great fit. So very fortunate. I don't want to say this too loud because I know there's vacancies around the SAU, but um the fact that we were able to um to fill that vacancy is is really uh a win for us. Um, we talked about facilities. Um, I just also wanted to mention the number of hours of professional development that has happened this summer with our staff. Thanks, Christine, for the leadership. Um, it's just, you know, we started earlyish summer with the literacy institute. Now our focus this year, you're gonna hear literacy, 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 reading. Um, so the literacy institute really kicked off this summer. There's been a lot of work continuing in literacy over the summer. We have many staff involved in letter string. It's called, it's like real, real deep um phonics and science of reading, really the deep, deep work around reading. Um, so they are, they've been working and meeting actually this summer, uh doing a book study. So really excited about that. Um, we did something a little different where we did sort of customize professional development, where Christine and I uh work with teachers around their needs and sort of the direction of our our goals and the work that we're doing around curriculum. And uh we had high interest in that. And we've seen some neat collaboration. The other day, for example, um the fifth grade teachers were working with Christie, the art teacher, on how to make, build connections between art, steam, humanities and some of the work that's happening in the classroom. That's where we want to be, you know, making, building these connections is is, I mean, that only enhances and um really maximizes learning. We can build those connections in your brain. So really, really good. Uh, the math pilot work is is happening. Uh Christina, our math teacher in grade six, will be involved in that at the middle school. Um, and we're excited to do that work and and um over, over next week. And Charlie, yes, Charlie. Uh, science curriculum work happening next week uh with our uppers and we talked about our goals. So I apologize for the, for the ramble, but no, it's been, it's been a great summer. So, so to get.
And and to your comment, you know, the the increase in the influx is a credit to you and this entire staff and and admin and everybody that's part of the the engine that makes this work up here. So um, probably two twenty nine isn't gonna stop. So, but good, good problem to have. Yeah. Um, I'll tell a quick story from last night's uh meet and greet. Steel summer, John's thunder. I don't know the the lady's um name at all, but she told a cute story that she has two kids here.
Oh, yeah.
And um she was talking about how wonderful the environment and the learning is, and it's not just straight book learning. It's, it's the environment. Everything goes on and make it all. And I don't know how old her daughter was, but one day last year, this family Another student brought in goats. And this, this gal just got enamored with the goats for the, the day, whatever, and now she's kind of like this goat expert. Still talks about it, raves about it, and has kind of got her parents maybe convinced to get goats themselves. But it was a really. It was just a really good story that, that tells and reflects this building really well and, and I, I just thought it was worth sharing that the. The, the little girl just thought the goats were fantastic and now they're talking about maybe getting goats themselves, so. Anyway, I don't know when the next.
It was barn animals are coming to them, but it was uh, one of, one of the wins there was that her daughter learned to reach, she was in kindergarten and, and just that balance, right? The whole child, that balance between.
Yeah.
The experiences and the real foundational skills.
And, and so, your, your comment too was. She learned more about goats from having them here versus grabbing a book. And reading about it. That was.
No, this was now the, uh, it was a family ask goes and they coordinated it and they were out in the, in the playground. Yeah. Yeah, actually, it gets, we could maybe buy a couple ghosts and. It's greener. Do we put that in the budget?
Oh, the amount of goat.
And when they get out, you're going to run around towns.
One of my first, one of my first weeks on the job, I got a call from the police. We had a meeting scheduled or something. He was, he was running late because he was chasing donkeys around. They were stopping traffic, yeah.
Sharon almost hit one on the way into work.
Yeah, yeah, it's uh, there's no traffic jams with these donkeys.
Yes.
In my day here, it was piglets.
Thanks, Tom.
Around school and into the woods for hours, chasing piglets. Superman jacket throwing over piglets, just saying. It was, yeah, so piglets, goats, donkeys.
Never know.
So growing up in Brooklyn, New Jersey, if you would ask me. With farm animals and donkeys and turkeys. And with that, I will take a, unless anybody has anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Make a motion.
You have a second? All in favor? Thank you, and now I think we have a non-meet.
We do.